Okay, hello, my name is Allison Collins and I'm an editor here at the Chattanooga Times Free Press. I'm here with District Five City Council candidate Cynthia Stanley Cash. Stanley Cash, before we start, can you please just briefly state why you feel you are qualified to take on this role? And say what your highest priority would be as a Chattanooga City Council member?
Well, for the last probably about 15 years when I moved into the Woodmore neighborhood, I joined the Neighborhood Association. At that time, my mother and I, my sister, we bought a house in Woodmore. And my kids and nephews, you know, they attended the Woodmore Elementary School, Dalewood and Brainerd. So, you know, and I was a working parent. And I just always participated in PTA meetings and field trips. And so along with doing that, I joined in the Neighborhood Association. And I just love, you know, uniting with others for the betterment of our communities and schools. So I just took to it. And then once I married Fred, we moved over into the North Brainerd area. And I just joined a new, you know, the Neighborhood Association in that area, in our area. And we have a lot of professional homeowners, retirees, and they're all members. And it was so impressive to join homeowners and homeowner Neighborhood Association. And, you know, working together to get sidewalks and community improvement. We've done a lot and I just see so much, we see so much that we need to continue doing to improve our community, our district. Matter of fact, all the communities on the other side, on the west, east side of the tunnels, we need more attention. And, you know, I've been so encouraged to take the torch up again to run for council. And the timing is perfect. I'm retired. I retired from UTC after 37 years. And so I have a lot of free time. Is that your doggy? Oh, cat.
Okay, next question. So we're going to move into a few questions about the city budget next. So the city has estimated to lose $8 million in revenue due to the COVID-19 pandemic in the 2021 fiscal year. As a council candidate, how would you balance a difficult budget in fiscal year 2022 or after under the stress caused by COVID-19 and the pandemic?
Well, I know we probably won't be financing any new major projects that will come out of the budget. And technically, the council have already approved a budget up until June, July 1. And I would follow the lead of the seasoned council members as far as what's most important to prioritize and budget, no matter, you know, the shortfall in the, in the budget balance. I would be, I would be learning, you know, the first year, I would learn from the season. I say season as far as, you know, council members is already in their seats. And learn how to, how each department is itemized, you know, with the monies. So I would learn, you know, because being new, you're on the learning curve. But I would be very mindful of projects and what to vote for and what not to vote for. But, but I am glad to know the recent news, the police department just was awarded $700,000 for the gun. What is that, the gun initiative? And that's one of my, one of my platform as far as safety and crime. And we always wanted to reestablish a police precinct in the District Five community. We used to have one that was located at East Gate Center. And it really serviced us on quick, fast, you know, response time because our district go all the way up to Highway 58. And the, you know, we were always told that the response time was because they were so late in responding, was because they had to service at a far distance, you know. They may be way up there in Harrison and have to rush back down this way, the team per shift. So the budget, I would be mindful. You know, I believe in watching your budget, not overspending. But now I think if, since the budget is so tight, so say, I have heard from neighbors that, you know, through the years, we've heard that big corporation need to pay their bills that they owe the city. So we need their help to pay some of their water bills and sewer bills, but that's a long story. I wouldn't bring that up.
Yeah, and we will get into some public safety questions here. It's just a few questions away. So the next question is, as we near a year since the virus hit Chattanooga, businesses and individuals within the city are struggling due to COVID-19 as well. How would you provide aid to those businesses and families hit hardest by the pandemic's economic impact? And are there any programs in place you'd want to keep or other programs you would want to add?
Well, I have a good example as far as I refer to young man to go and apply for COVID relief, financial help. You know, he's a working young man, 40 hours a week, but with the hours cut back and all that, you know, you still have your rent, your car payment, you know. So his job, they were rotating full hour shifts with the employees to help them out, which is good. So I had suggested that he apply for one of, one of the city grants. And he did, but it's such a runaround, you know, it's not an easy process to, to, and you're zooming to, to get a response right away, you know. It may be a week, it may be a two, and now you're two or three months behind in your rent payment. I think the city should do a better job where they house the money because they spread it out in different areas, you know. United Way and other little departments, and I think you should. And you're only, he was only allowed to apply once. And once is not enough if you're behind in markets, rent payment, you know. I think the city should allow them to maybe get help for three months rent. Kind of work on that part of it. And it's a lack of communication. So we found out the hangup with him not getting a response back was, and the young man in the mayor office, he, he was working with us. And he asked me one detailed question that we didn't think about. The young man that I was referring had already applied for assistance, but he had applied for electrical assistance. This assistant he was pursuing for rent, but we found out you can only apply once, one or the other. So, you know, people need rent, they need light billing, they need all, you know, covered at least a couple of months. So it worked out, it worked out. His job called back more often and had more work hours. But you do hate to see a hardworking person that fall behind when they've been able to keep up their bills. And that's happening to everyone, you know, so.
So the next question is paving and transportation consistently rank at the top of citizens' top concerns according to annual studies by the city. What transportation or infrastructure goals would you have if elected?
That's another thing about our community, our District Five and other communities. Um, we just feel that a lot of the paving money, the majority and the employees, the public works, they're, the department heads, I'll say that, they are the ones to assign the staff. They focus more on downtown with paving monies and, you know, major paving projects. Now, we may get a road paved, half a road, or a pothole filled, half the block. But I think they need to, now that's one thing I would pursue as far as pursuing more money directed towards the city council District Five budget. Because I know each city council district get their own certain amount of the budget to do what they need to do with. So communities need more help in paving. We need our roads repaired, you know. We are, I always say, I describe District Five communities as generational homes, generational neighborhoods, you know, passed down to the next generation. We have beautiful homes, beautiful, well-kept, maintained homes all the way from Woodmore going all the way to Washington Hills, Bunny Oaks. It's amazing. If you really drive through the subdivisions, these subdivisions look like cities with beautiful homes. But the outer roads, that's where we need more attention as far as road paving, more public works help. And when we do call or put in requests, we're always told that the city and the public works are too shorthanded. But then we drive downtown and we see, you know, weekend workers working to keep downtown clean, which is nice. But then we want to drive back home with our out of town relatives and friends and drive through nice neighborhoods to get to our beautiful subdivisions. So we need more attention on communities. And I guess with, you know, with the coronavirus and slow tourism, they may, we may pay more attention to communities.
And next, we'll jump into some questions about the business scene and Chattanooga's economy. So city labor unions and many activists support a $15 minimum wage for city employees, which Mayor Burke had intended to begin implementing prior to COVID. Do you support this or any other specific pay increase plans for city employees? Why or why not?
Oh, I support a minimum wage increase, definitely. When I was working at UTC, I, you know, I did join our union. It was new to the campus, the United Campus Union. And I'm very supportive of lower paid employees. Because I worked as administrative assistant, so my position was in that category. You know, our, well, hourly rate and, you know, needing pay raises. So I would definitely support them, the unions and the increase, definitely.
Okay. In 2019, 40% of Chattanooga's households are housing cost burdened, meaning they pay more than 30% of their income for housing and may struggle to afford other necessities. How would you address affordable housing in the city?
Well, there's two styles of affordable that we found out, you know, it's affordable, making a good liv, living. And it's another style of affordable for the homeless or, you know, homeless families. I look at it like the city and county, we have a lot of vacant properties, houses boarded up, foreclosed on. To me, I think we really should focus on rehabbing those homes, making them more affordable to the lower wage payer, you know, families. And my heart breaks to know that we have a lot of families living in the hotels, you know. They may have been evicted from just one incident, but still, you know, it's sad to know. Families, children, bus stops stopping at the hotels. And I think they should have the first option to working class homeless that can afford to move into a house or lease a house. I think we could really pay more attention to rehabbing the city and county properties instead of putting them on the bid list. Let's try to just rehab those homes and put them back on the tax rolls and let, you know, people that can afford them have first option.
And kind of an extension of that question, a number of Chattanoogaans are experiencing homelessness. How would you further the city's progress toward reducing homelessness?
Well, that's part of what I was talking about as far as, you know, you have family homelessness, you know, living month to month in, in the hotels. The local homelessness, you know, you have several styles of homelessness. You have some homeless people that prefer to be in the open air, you know, and just want to live and be comfortable that way. And then you have some that's really in need, and then you have some that's on the border of being homeless. And those are the ones that's living in the hotels. And the hotel living is very expensive. So to me, you know, if they can barely afford hotel expenses, they, we can, you know, offer them more affordable rehab homes that's owned by the city and county with our tax dollars.
Downtown Chattanooga wants a showcase is struggling to hold on to businesses. How can that be improved? What factors have made downtown less appealing to businesses? And could the Business Improvement District be at play, do you think?
Definitely the Business Improvement District, definitely they should be in play with helping the other businesses around their district center. And I don't have a clear answer, but I'm all supportive of helping them, helping the businesses downtown. Matter of fact, we have a lot of, in District Five, you know, we have a lot of business, small business plazas, and they need help also, you know, and most of them are older type. And I just would love to unite, if elected, I would unite a homeowner business council to, you know, address their needs. And I, it would really improve the community if we improve those business neighborhood plazas like on Bunny Oaks Drive, Highway 58 over here, along with downtown. And we really sympathize with them. So I would follow the lead of the seasoned council members and the new mayor. You know, I'm only one vote and I'm all for supporting, and I would support whatever effort is put before us.
Our next session is on public safety, which you were referring to before. So my first question is Chattanooga saw a sharp increase in gun violence in 2020. How would you, as mayor, no, I'm sorry, how would you, as a city council candidate, work to lower violent crime rates in Chattanooga?
Well, the community, we experience a lot of the aftermath, you know. Either it's over in the community where it occurs, or they racing through here, going home. And that's why it is so important for us to have a community mini-police precinct. We need them in communities, you know, because we have the traffic, the cameras on the poles. That would really address our concerns as far as safety. You know, the seniors, the neighbors sitting on the porch, we're not able to do that much. But I would encourage and look for budget money to establish a mini-police, community police precinct in the District Five community that's centralized, that's in a centralized location. Because our district is from Brainerd Moore Road all the way up Highway 58. So maybe somewhere like Bunny Oaks Drive, somewhere centralized. The last one we had several, about 15 years ago, was located in the East Gate Mall area, and that was very convenient. And since then, we were promised to get, you know, another one in our district. But so I'm running for that, to call in that market, that promise. So crime is rampant, it really, really is. And I think it should be another way to, to approach crime also. You know, they tried the BRI and they tried that, that's all I want to say.
Okay. The next question is about the protest against police brutality that happened this past summer. Activists spent the summer protesting police brutality across the country and in Chattanooga demanding defunding or divesting from the police. Would you ever consider defunding or divesting from CPD to perform or to reform? And what other ways, if any, would you consider law enforcement reform?
Well, saying defund is a hot word. I don't think you just have to defund. I think you can utilize the money that is meant to respond to the social services calls. And, and, you know, you still use that money, but you get the right people in those positions. Not just your, you know, your officers, officers, you need professional people. And just move that money over to, to fund the, the positions, which would be the same positions under the one funding budget. You're just having more people specializing in responding to social services calls. And I wouldn't want to defund, but maybe you may not have to increase the budget right now till you look over everything.
Okay. Many activists and some candidates have called for the removal of current high-ranking officers, including Chief David Roddy. What, if any, changes in CPD leadership would you hope to implement if elected?
Well, I know one thing, I do know is there's no need to recall Chief Roddy, you know. The new mayor will have that option whether or not to keep him or hire a new chief of police. And from what I understand, sometimes, I mean, at a point, the officer's years of service top out. So he may be ready to retire or, you know, relocate. I don't think, I don't agree with just wanting to just fire someone or replace them without cause, you know. So that's a touchy issue. That, that's an issue that should be studied by all nine city council districts and the mayor. Because, you know, technically, the mayor, to my understanding, make his selection on the candidate and then the council vote on whether or not to hire them. So I would just be speculating. So I wouldn't dare call for someone's job, you know, unless he shot and killed somebody and, and, you know, criminal.
All right. Many have questioned the conduct of activists given vandalism, disruption to businesses, and confrontations with the police. Others have criticized law enforcement for restricting access to public areas, surveillance, surveillance of activists on private property and the nature of summer arrests. If summer unrest came up during your term, how would you weigh restrictions for activists and police presence? Or what would you have done differently this past summer?
Well, I've witnessed, you know, all what was going on. We all witnessed that. And it's, we all, you know, we, we're not all 100% on the marches, some of the marches and some of the calls for actions. I think some was extreme and just because of disagreements. And first, you need to come together at the table and discuss your disagreement before you holler for someone to be removed and all that. So I believe in negotiating, I believe in uniting all, all involved persons that should be at the table. And let's talk it out. I believe in talking it out. I'm, I'm a good uniter and negotiator as far as my experience with raising my family and the kids and working with the neighborhood group and getting things done, projects, working with city officials. So I don't think people should just do things drastically and expect drastic measures just because this what you want. I hope that's enough.
Yeah. So we're about to get into a few kind of miscellaneous questions, so I apologize, they're going to go kind of different directions. Have you received a COVID-19 vaccine? And if not, will you when it is available?
No, I have not. And I've never been one to take the flu shot. So I will take one later on, once they get all the kinks out of it and have enough in supply. And, you know, right now, it's still a learning curve, but I don't discourage taking them, no, no. So when it's my turn in line and, you know, because they're going by necessity. Age groups and, and first responders and nursing home employees and staff and residents. So it'll be a while, but I'm sure I will take it. They don't have any more slip-ups.
With distribution?
Yes.
Um, so in your opinion, what should the relationship between the mayor and city council look like? And will you help to cultivate those relationships?
Well, when I started working in the community, I started doing the Merrick Hensley administration. Oh, he was a community mayor, Merrick Hensley, Mayor Corker, Mayor Littlefield was some. But Merrick Hensley, his administration, he had a once a month open door meeting for community residents just to come in and say hello or whatever without an appointment. Now, that was very impressive and inclusionary of the citizens. As far as the new mayor, I have noticed a couple of, I liked Mayor Burke, but sometimes, not just him, new mayors, you bring your own, your own staff in. They can be exclusionary of community members except for the ones that support them through the campaign. So I have noticed that you can be blackballed or you can't have access readily the way you should with your mayor. So I would encourage the new mayor and new council people. I think we need to have collective, once a year town hall meetings. I know I would establish, reestablish community town hall meetings. We're lacking. And that's where a failure to communicate what's going on downtown with the citizens. And then we have to hear wrong information if you don't read the paper, look at the news, and a lot of people don't. And they depend on community leaders to share knowledge, which I do and have done. So I really think we should get back to the council leading the mayor a little more when it comes to community neighborhoods and district. That's what a city council person is for. We're, we know our district. The mayor can't know all nine. So we represent each district and we all, you know, need different needs at different times. And the mayor can't be everywhere to know what we need. It's up to us to guide him. And hopefully, he will support us in our projects.
And kind of going off of that and elaborating off of what you're saying, do you believe transparency will be important in your role? And if so, how will you ensure that happens if you are elected? Will you grant interviews with reporters and answer their questions on a regular basis?
Oh, yes, you all have always done me well. I've never had a problem with reporters. A lot of people complain. I've been in the newspaper. I used to be a community reporter for the Times Free Press a few years ago. That's, well, that's not where that picture come from. But that was, hey, that, each, each district had their own community reporter. And I think that came up during the Merrick Cork administration, the year. But that was very informative. We used to notify, it was like, you know, a little small newspaper and a little 90-word caption per district. And it notified people to flee markets, what's going on downtown, they having a function. So that was very helpful in open communication. And I believe in transparency. And I tell my members and my friends and my supporters, you know, this position here is like a chandelier. The chandelier is only as bright as each bulb shining. You know, I may have the seat, but I represent us all and I need guidance. You know, I don't know everything. I'm just brave and thankful to be able to run. But I will have wise counsel. And that's another thing of, a good thing to form a business homeowner, business chamber of commerce. We don't have that. That way, you're at the table with the business owners in your district and as homeowners and president of the Neighborhood Association, and we can powwow and discuss things all collectively. And I believe in having town hall meetings. And I, I would have twice a year District Five City Council meeting. And then, you know, once a year, hopefully, I would love to invite all elected leaders that represent District Five all the way up to the state, and we have one collective meeting. And there's one. that represent district five all the way up to the state. And we have one collective meeting. And there's one commissioner, I'm really impressed with how she relates to her community. And she's a county commissioner, uh, can't think her name. But she, I think she hosts a meeting, community meeting twice a year with all the elected representative that represent her area all the way, all the way up to the state with the senator, legislature, county commissioner, school board. We all represent the same communities. So we should all unite and have community meetings at least twice a year collectively. And then we can pool our budget money. And matter of fact, where we live, a lot of our districts border up together. You know, like where I live, coming out of the tunnels, on one side of the road is district nine. On the other side is district five divided by the orange lines. But we have businesses, plazas on both sides of the roads. To me, that's partnership with your money, your budgeted district money to improve both areas together and pave the road together. You know.
Alright. Okay, um, and our last question here, uh, would you support public money for a new Chattanooga Lookout Stadium?
I thought you were gonna ask me about trade school. I support trade school, the lookout stadium in the location of the Kirkman Trade School. Uh, now your question is what? Support them for a new stadium?
Would you support public money for a new Chattanooga Lookout Stadium?
They need one? Isn't that new? It's still new. They just need to relocate.
Yeah, I think that, um, they would like a new stadium in a different part of town, yes.
Okay, well, this is what we can do. Let's put the trade school in that location and let's support them relocating. When we, but I don't know if you're from here, but Kirkman High School, Trade School was located right there where, uh, not where the Discovery Museum, where IMAX Theater and the lookout in that area. Let's switch spots.
So would you support public money for a new Chattanooga Lookout Stadium?
I would support. It's hard to say because I don't, they look like they're well off, you know? What, what do we support them now? With public money? I would have to look into that for a clear answer. But I would say not the first year. If they're, they needed to move, I, I, if the majority and, and, and it's, it's needed. I would say yes, I wouldn't be paying, you know, I wouldn't hold up progress. But I do support a trade school. And a lot of the other, uh, officials, elected officials have ran on that promise through the years. And I think that we all should get together and pool our money and support. We don't even have to build a new building from the start, just open one up. S- uh, supply it with the equipment and then build a new s- building later on. You know, the school board have a lot of, uh, vacant buildings. The city have a lot of vacant buildings in the county. So we can refurbish one of those already existing buildings just to get a start, get this trade school started. And the reason, another reason is, you know, the school board, they're they're, well, not just them, but they're mentioning that the kids may have to repeat eighth grade. And a lot of kids in high school may not go to college. So I would think a trade school would really benefit the, uh, those kids, because they may not want to go back and repeat, you know, being a high schooler. But they, I'm sure, hopefully, they probably would love to go to a trade school. To, to, you know, get, earn a trade since they're not college bound. And, and from there, you partner with the unions, they're a print, you know, the, the electrical and the plumber unions, the different trades. We all do a partnership. Let's bring this trade school about, you know, it's time. So I'm all for that. And, um, I have a couple of places that, that vacant buildings to suggest, but I don't want to mention that right now. But I want to make sure. My, one of my platform issues is, I want to save the East Gate Senior Activities Center. And before COVID, the lease was coming up to expire at the end of December and city council was, uh, debating whether or not to, to continue leasing East Gate Center because, uh, they're not using it. And it makes sense because of the cost, but the community use the center. We love that center. It is a beautiful, uh, program. It's grown. So that's one major thing, another thing I would pursue and support. So.
Okay. Alright, wonderful. Well, thank you. Is there anything else you would like to add?
Um, well, for my district, we need a couple of red lights. We need a red light at our beautiful neighborhood grocery store over here at this Levy at Moore Road. Uh, we were so happy to get the Walmart neighborhood grocery store several years ago to, you know, we all worked, worked together to bring it about. But they, well, the red lights near, or they tell us they're too close to put one right there. And we understand that, but it's, we need something, uh, there for safety because it is, the, the business traffic is so heavy during certain hours. You will risk your life pulling out of there, so. I'm for a red light trade school, supporting the lookout ball field relocating, let us use half of that building for a trade school. I don't know.